This morning, we have a special presentation that will start our meeting with before we start our official meeting. My name is Elizabeth Glidden, and I am the Vice President of the Minneapolis City Council. And I'm joined here today by Councilmember Don Quincy in welcoming a delegation from our sister city, Harbin, China. And I'm going to ask the foundation members and their supporters who know up front, and we will have a big ceremony together. There's no one standing, we'll never start from there. Thank you so much, you're welcome. So, the city of Minneapolis has had a sister city relationship with Harbin, China, that was approved in 1992, that has been in place for twenty-three years. During that time, there have been many exchanges between Harbin and Minneapolis. Most recently, just earlier in January, our mayor of Minneapolis, Bette Hodges, as well as Councilmember Don Quincy, from the Olympic Board, traveled together with representatives of Minneapolis and the U.S.-China People's Friendship Association to visit Harbin. The mayor of Harbin had invited Mayor Hodges together with mayors of several other cold cities with over five minutes to attend the Harbin Cold Zone Expo and Forum, with the helm conjunction with the opening of the thirty-first annual Harbin International Ice Snow Festival. This is the largest ice snow festival in the world. At the Cold Zone Expo Forum, Mayor Hodges and several other Harbin sister city mayors presented their sweetest perspectives on making the most of the winter in their cities. The mayor described many activities and events that served to attract visitors and entourage local residents in the winter time. Some of the other participants were Canada, Finland, Denmark, and Minneapolis. Today, we welcome our guests for a short two-day visit to Minneapolis, where they will have the opportunity to see the work that we are doing here in Minneapolis. I know they've seen many of our attractions already, and their visit will improve seeing the city of Lake Blount tomorrow. So, we are so excited that you are here. Thank you.
Inform the microphone was not on. But that's all right, because we are now to the official part, which is reading a certificate of welcome. So whereas in September 1992, a formal sister city relationship was established between Harbin and the city of Minneapolis, and whereas the occasion of this visit by the Harbin delegation marks more than twenty-three years of friendship between Harbin and Minneapolis, and whereas, through mutual commitment to the sister city partnership and involvement in this exchange, the leaders of Harbin and Minneapolis continue to advance shared goals of peace and prosperity. In recognition thereof, and in heartfelt respect and gratitude for our friends from Harbin, the mayor and members of the city council of the city of Minneapolis hereby present this certificate of friendly citizen to commemorate this visit, together with sincere appreciation, gratitude, and thanks. And as part of our welcome, Councilmember Quincy will read a letter from the mayor of Minneapolis, Betsy Hodges.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I'm honored, of course, to be able to read this message from Mayor Hodges, but I also wanted to take a moment to let the people of Minneapolis and the attendees of today's meeting, especially our young people, to understand the importance of relationships with other cities and across the world, and this has been a terrific relationship. Mayor Hodges and I were excited and delighted to have the opportunity to visit our sister city in Harbin, China, and took away many cultural experiences, educational, and ways to celebrate and embrace winter as our way to grow tourism and economic development with each other, and other cities that visited the Cold Zone Expo. So if I could, I'd like to read the message, the official letter of welcome from Mayor Betsy Hodges on behalf of Mayor Hodges. Welcome to Minneapolis. I'm so happy you are including Minneapolis in your visit, and we'll meet many of the people who diligently support our sister city connection with Harbin. Unfortunately, the rescheduled dates for your visit overlap with a prior commitment I have to attend Aspen Institute Rodell Fellowship in Public Leadership Program in Colorado. I regret that I will not be here to greet you in person. Please accept this letter indicating how much I value our sister city connection and am honored by your visit. I'm very thankful for my recent experience at the Harbin International Cold Zone Development Forum. The thoughtful and well-crafted itinerary inspired me to think about ways we can continue to strengthen our sister cities' relationship, and the visit to the Grand Ice and Snow World Expo was amazing. We will do our best to exceed your expectations for your visit to Minneapolis. Our tourism and sister city staff at Meet Minneapolis will arrange appointments for you to showcase how we celebrate winter in Minneapolis. In addition, you will be greeted by Minneapolis officials and representatives from the U.S.-China Peoples Friendship Association Minnesota chapter. You'll likely have a busy itinerary while here, but I'm sure the results will prove worthwhile. Thank you for making time to visit Minneapolis.
We are also joined by Ralph Beha from the U.S.-China People's Friendship Association. He is going to help us with some introductions, and then we would like to have some comments from the delegation.
Thanks very much. Pardon me. I'd like you to meet our delegation members from Harbin. This is Mr. Wang Xiaoxi. Wang Ying. Mr. Xia Chienming. Mr. Mu Hongfeng. And our dear friend of many years from Harbin, Robert Shendong Song. Robert Song. Thank you very much. Ni xiang. Xiang. Jiu. Ju. 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 Ju.
We are grateful and happy to come here, and we feel especially grateful for all the arrangement by Meet Minneapolis and all other friends in the city.
We are happy to be here, and we are proud that we can bring with us all the good wishes and the hopes from the citizens of Harbin to our sister city, Minneapolis. And I wish the people who live here will become more happy with the leadership of the city council and the mayor. city. So we hope in the future, cooperations and collaborations will happen more often between us.
I hope in the future, with more visits between citizens and government officials, and we can achieve more goals, and we'll do more cooperation in other fields. Lastly, I would like to represent the city of Harbin and also the ten million citizens of the city to invite all of you to pay a visit to our city, to see what we have, what we can offer. You're welcome to go to Harbin in the future.
再一次谢谢明市的朋友，thank you.
Thank you again for everything. Thank you.
My name is Elizabeth Glidden, and I'm calling to order our Minneapolis City Council meeting, and I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Quincy.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Frye.
Here.
Palmasano.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Kano.
Here.
Reich is absent.
Bender.
Here.
President Johnson is absent. Vice President Glidden.
Here.
There are eleven members present.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda.
Move adoption?
That's been moved and seconded. All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Next, we have acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting and adjourned session of January sixteenth, 2015. I'll take a motion.
Move acceptance?
All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And next, we have referral petitions, communications, and reports of the city officers to the proper committees and departments. I'll take a motion on that.
Move referral?
All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That is adopted. And just as we are moving into the reports of standing committees, I know this is a little out of order, but we wanted to do a special welcome to some guests that we have, and Councilmember Worsami had asked to make the welcome, so I'll allow him to do that.
Thank you, Vice President Glidden. I just wanted to welcome our very own Sherman Patterson and his team, lead by example, young men. This is a project that Sherman's been working on for a couple of months now. He's taken five youths, or five young men from North Minneapolis and five young men from Cedar Riverside Neighborhood, and he's putting them through their paces through a program that he designed for his Bush Fellowship. And today, he's giving them a tour of City Hall, and I had the privilege of meeting them early on this morning, and just wanted to introduce them to the city council and thank Sherman for his hard work and for the team, and encourage them to continue on their path. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and welcome to all of you. We're really happy that you've joined us today. Thank you. So we have now turned to reports of the standing committees. The first is Committee the Hall, and I will turn to Councilmember Andrew Johnson to give this report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We bring forward two items. The first is a staff directive to come back with recommendations on the grants application process, and the other is acceptance of a grant from Bloomberg Philanthropies for $900,000 for three years to establish an innovation delivery team.
And you're moving approval of both items?
And I move approval of both items, and we'll stand for any questions.
All right. So is there any discussion? Anyone wish to pull any item off? I'm not seeing anything, so the clerk will please call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Vice President Glidden.
Aye.
There are eleven ayes.
Thank you. Next, we have Community Development and Regulatory Services with that committee's chair, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. We have eighteen items for approval this morning. Notable items include item number home, which is the Green Homes North Round Fund Funding Awards. This is to allow thirteen projects, single-family homes in the north side to move forward, as well as item number eleven, which is the extension of exclusive development rights for Praxis, and item number fourteen, which is allocating money for homelessness services through our ESG allocation. And then lastly, I want to note item number seventeen, which is moving forward on acquiring a number of tax-forfeited parcels from Hennepin County to move forward on the next phase of the Humboldt-Greenway Single Family Home Project. With that, I'll move all items, one through eighteen, for approval.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman has moved all eighteen items. I will ask if there is discussion on any item. Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, for a madam chair. I just have a few comments on a couple items, but I don't want to pull anything from the agenda.
Well, which items are they?
Yes, I'd like to comment on item number six, item and item number eleven.
Okay, why don't you go ahead, please?
Okay, sure. Let me comment on item number six first, which is approving rental license conditions in stipulated agreement for retention of licenses. You know, I want to first start out by just saying, I mean, sixty-six addresses, I mean, my first thought was just, holy cow, I mean, that's just, that's a lot, and, you know, I don't have perspective as to, you know, whether we've ever agreed into, or whether we've ever done the settlement on that many addresses before, but I, it's substantial, and I wanted to thank city staff for their hard work in coming to this agreement with Mr. Meldahl. He's a landlord that owns a lot of property up in North Minneapolis. I mean, in this situation, he has a responsibility to make sure that his properties are well-maintained, clean, and safe, and when I look at the sixty-six properties, about, a little bit over fifty are in Ward Five. The other twelve or fourteen or so are in Ward Four, and my goodness, so, you know, for us, I mean, it's really important that landlords like Steve Meldahl are abiding by the conditions set forth in the city, and that they're doing as well as they can to maintain these properties for, you know, the health and safety of the residents who live in North Minneapolis. And so, you know, I want to thank him for agreeing to this. I mean, I don't imagine this thing came easily, you know, I'm sure there was a lot of back-and-forth and things like that, but I'm, thank goodness, it's done, and hopefully, the residents of North Minneapolis have benefit from an agreement such as this. So that's my first comment with regards to item number six. You know, for item number eleven, you know, first and foremost, I want to thank Councilmember Goodman for helping me with this process, walking me through this process. You know, I think in December, I mean, this situation kind of played out in the media a bit, and, you know, at the end, I think we came to a good resolution. To me, you know, this parcel on the corner of Penn and Plymouth, which has been, you know, vacant and empty for a good twenty-plus years, is a great opportunity for development in Ward Five, and, you know, this is the second extension for, you know, Glenn Ford and Praxis for development, and I understand that starting a new business on the north side isn't easy, particularly one as large and complicated as this, a grocery store, but it's necessary. And, you know, when Mr. Ford approached the city two years ago, he made some promises, and, you know, just last year, he had an extension of a year, and, you know, it came to that point where we had to make a decision as to what to, what to do, and in that situation, you know, our staff and, you know, I mean, us as a council, thought it was the best thing to do to just say, you know, this is done, we got to move on, but, you know, things played out in the media, and, you know, ninety days, Mr. Ford was asking for as an extension, and, you know, in the Tribune story in December, Mr. Ford said he needed ninety days to secure this financing, to get all his ducks in a row. The extension covers, this extension today covers that ninety days, and, you know, if he doesn't comply with all the milestones on the timeline presented by CPED, site plans for, site plans by February twentieth, and application for Grow North Funds by March twentieth, final approval from AIG by March thirty-first, and the more detailed architectural plans by April twenty-eighth, I cannot support this project any longer, and I wouldn't support any extension of development rights for Mr. Ford after the deadline here. And, you know, there was a story in the Tribune in the middle of January where he talks, Glenn Ford talks about how there was a war that was started, and I can tell you, I mean, there was no war in this situation, and frankly, you know, it was just that Mr. Ford couldn't meet his deadlines. That's all it was. And, you know, for us, I mean, when we deal with folks, we deal with folks in good faith, and we want people to be good on their word. When they say something, we want them to get it done. That's plain and simple, and so, just want to make clear that this is a hard deadline. We want it to be done by then. We want all the things that he says he promises to do to be done by then. So thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm not seeing further comment on the Community Development and Regulatory Services Agenda, which has been moved by Councilmember Goodman, so the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Vice President Glidden.
Aye.
There are eleven ayes.
Next, we have Health, Environment, and Community Engagement with Councilmember Gordon, the chair of that committee, to present the report.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing three items forward for approval today. The first is approving appointments and reappointments to the Minneapolis Public Health Advisory Committee of Harrison Kellner, Acacia Everett, Johani Berry, Sarah Jane Cavani, Happy Reynolds Cook, Karen Soderberg, Rebecca Thoman, Sylvia Perez, and Joseph Caliani. The second item is authorizing $100,000 increase to our Tubman contract to provide case management services in 2015 for youth at risk for involvement with violence. And the third item is authorizing execution of a contract with the University of Minnesota for up to $50,000 for veterinary services, and I will move all three items.
All right. The agenda has been moved by Councilmember Gordon. Any discussion on any item? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Vice President Glidden.
Aye.
There are eleven ayes.
Next, we have Health, Environment, and Community Engagement with Councilmember Gordon, the chair of that committee, to present the report.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing three items forward for approval today. The first is approving appointments and reappointments to the Minneapolis Public Health Advisory Committee of Harrison Kellner, Acacia Everett, Johani Berry, Sarah Jane Cavani, Happy Reynolds Cook, Karen Soderberg, Rebecca Thoman, Sylvia Perez, and Joseph Caliani. The second item is authorizing $100,000 increase to our Tubman contract to provide case management services in 2015 for youth at risk for involvement with violence. And the third item is authorizing execution of a contract with the University of Minnesota for up to $50,000 for veterinary services, and I will move all three items.
All right. The agenda has been moved by Councilmember Gordon. Any discussion on any item? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Vice President Glidden.
Aye.
There are eleven ayes.
Next, we have Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management with the chair of that committee, Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have three items today for approval. The first item is to authorize acceptance of $30,000 in grant funding for, or from the Joyce Foundation to support the position of community engagement coordinator and other project costs. The second item is to authorize acceptance of $30,000 in grant funding from the Target Foundation to be used for the same position. And the third item is to authorize an amendment to contract agreement with West Publishing Corporation and West Government Services for access to database searches for investigative purposes. And with that, I will move all three items for approval.
Thank you. Councilmember Yang has moved all three items on the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll, please.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Vice President Glidden.
Aye.
There are eleven ayes.
Next, we have Transportation and Public Works with the vice chair of that committee, Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
already approved in this area on Sixth Street. The next two are easements for new bike trails. Number six and number seven are two street resurfacing projects, which we've heard and gone through public hearing. Number eight is a public works project moving forward to conduct a survey of our water systems to identify leakages in those systems. Number nine extends our relationship with the University of Minnesota for the carbon filter pilot project for our water system. Numbers 10, 11, and 12 are all reconstruction projects where we had public hearings for them this past cycle, and I wanted to bring your attention to number 12. Councilmember Reich, chair of our committee, mentioned that we would be bringing forward a modification to number 12, and that modification is before you today. I'd like to move that this report for number 12, the Nawadaha Boulevard to Minnehaha Avenue Reconstruction Project are amended as follows. I'd like to decrease the total assessment amount to reflect this correction to these two property addresses in front of you. That's 4012 Nawadaha Boulevard and 4701 Hiawatha Avenue.
And you've moved all those items?
I'm sorry?
Move all those items?
I move all of those items.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Palmasano.
Wait, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I also, at the very end is a bid for, a concrete bid for concrete work in 2015 for our 2015 paving project.
Okay.
Sorry, I move all of those items.
Yes, I'll take that as a motion to move approval of all 13 items, and ask if there is discussion, comments, or motions on any item. Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, I want to comment on item number five, but I have a quick, I guess, comment with regards to this amendment. Should we take a vote on the amendment first, and then roll it over into consent items, or what do you want to do with that?
So, I think that Councilmember Palmasano has essentially moved a substitute. So, this is, let me just, Mr. Clerk, may I say it correctly?
Yeah. Yes, Madam President, as I understand it, the motion was presented with the amendment that was offered as part of the base motion. So, what stands in front of the committee is all items with the amendment included.
Right. So, we have all items before us properly. I guess I would ask, if you have something that is more than just a comment, then we would pull that item off. But if you have comments, then I would just say go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to comment on item number five, which is 26th Avenue North Street Reconstruction Renovation Project. And, you know, I just want to say that this project is a long time in coming. There, at this point, I mean, we're at a point where the folks who live close to 26th Avenue North are just so grateful that this is going to happen. I frankly think that, you know, I've seen a lot of public works projects where people have been angry and mad about assessments. I think for the most part, I mean, in this situation, I've never seen people so happy that this thing is going to go through. And, you know, it certainly is a compromise. I mean, there's a long history with the neighborhood groups, and, you know, not being happy, you know, they created these visioning sessions. And at this point, I mean, I want to thank Public Works for working so hard to get something through. I want to thank URS for doing most of the layouts, and, you know, all the citizens, you know, in and near North Minneapolis who have been helpful in making this process work and getting to this resolution. This is a project layout, and I think, you know, it's a great compromise for all the folks involved. And, you know, I can't wait until the end of 2016 when I can actually drive on this and not have to worry about my alignment or my tires. And so, just wanted to send thank you to everybody that was involved in this.
Thank you, Councilmember Yang. Any further discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Vice President Glidden.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
Thank you. Next, we have Ways and Means with that committee's chair, Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ways and Means Committee brings forward 12 items for your consideration this morning. The first are two legal settlements. The item number two is authorizing the city to join a friend-in-the-court brief in support of the president's executive action on immigration. The third item is executing an agreement with the state of Minnesota for Minnesota Court Data Services. The fourth item is accepting a federal certified local government grant award for State Historic Preservation Office. Item number five on our report is the approval of two-year city council appointments for another, number of the city council appointments on our Capitol Long Range Improvement Committee. The sixth item is the 2014 Fourth Quarter Gift Acceptance Resolution. Item number seven is negotiation and execution of an amendment with MINDOT for parking lot lease agreement. Item number eight is executing a contract amendment with Ebert Inc. for traffic maintenance building renovation project. The ninth item is the execution of an amendment to a contract with Terra General Contractors for the Hiawatha Liquid AC Tank Project. Item 10 is the acceptance of a Greater Twin Cities United Way Grant in the amount of $5,000. Item number 11 is the approval of the position of Director Innovation Delivery Team as presented by the executive committee. And item number 12 is the approval and settlement agreement between the City of Minneapolis and Comcast, as well as passage of a resolution on conditional transfer of Comcast franchise agreement in Minneapolis to Great Land Connections. I'd like to move all 12 items of the Ways and Means Committee report.
Thank you. Councilmember Quincy has moved all 12 items. Is there discussion on any of these items that are before us? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Vice President Glidden.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
Thank you. Next, we have the introduction and referral calendar, and this is where ordinances are introduced, given their first reading, and then referred to a committee. So, item number one is a motion by Frye to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending Title 12, Chapter 244 of the Minneapolis Code of Ordnances relating to Housing Maintenance Code for First Reading and Referral to the Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee. This is amending regulations for hotels, motels, and bed and breakfast establishments. Any discussion on this item? All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have a motion by Frye to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending Title 13 of the Minneapolis Code of Ordnances relating to licenses and business regulations for first reading and referral to the Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee amending regulations for hotels, motels, and bed and breakfast establishments. And this is with Chapter 297 relating to hotels and Chapter 297A relating to bed and breakfast facilities. Any discussion on this item? All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Next, we have an ordinance introduction by Councilmember Frye to introduce the subject matter of the following ordinances amending Title 20 of the Minneapolis Code of Ordnances relating to zoning code for first reading and referral to the Zoning and Planning Committee amending regulations for hotels, motels, and bed and breakfast establishments. And so, we have Chapter 520 relating to introductory provisions, Chapter 536 relating to specific development standards, Chapter 537 relating to accessory uses and structures, Chapter 541 relating to off-street parking and loading, Chapter 546 relating to residence districts, Chapter 547 relating to office residence districts, Chapter 548 relating to commercial districts, Chapter 549 relating to downtown districts, Chapter 550 relating to industrial districts, and Chapter 551 relating to overlay districts. Any discussion on that ordinance introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Next, we have a motion by Councilmember Bender to introduce the subject matter of the following ordinances amending Title 20 of the Minneapolis Code of Ordnances relating to zoning code for first reading and referral to the Zoning and Planning Committee revising provisions relating to off-street parking. And these include Chapter 520 relating to introductory provisions, Chapter 525 on administration and enforcement, 527 on planned unit development, Chapter 530 on site plan review, Chapter 531 on non-conforming uses and structures, Chapter 536 on specific development standards, Chapter 541 relating to off-street parking and loading, and Chapter 551 relating to overlay districts. Any discussion on this ordinance introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That item is approved. Next, we have resolutions, and we have two resolutions. The first is a resolution honoring 15 years of service to the City of Minneapolis by Wesley J. Butler. And item number two is a resolution declaring March 12th, 2015 World Kidney Day in the City of Minneapolis. Any discussion on either of these resolutions? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that item is approved. Next, we have new business, and for this, I will read each notice, and we do not require a vote on these items. The first is a notice of intent by Glidden to introduce that the next regular meeting of the city council the subject matter of an ordinance amending Title 13, Chapter 286 of the Minneapolis Code of Ordnances relating to licenses and business regulations, massage and bodywork establishments. This is amending provisions related to exceptions and definitions. Next, we have a notice of intent by Councilmember Palmasano to introduce and read, to introduce at the next regular meeting of the city council the subject matter of the following ordinances amending Title 20 of the Minneapolis Code of Ordnances relating to zoning code. This is amending provisions to reflect modifications to residential infill zoning text, including Chapter 546 relating to residence districts and Chapter 547 relating to office residence districts. And finally, we have a notice of intent by Councilmember Palmasano to introduce at the next regular meeting of the city council the subject matter of an ordinance amending Title 5, Chapter 87 of the Minneapolis Code of Ordnances relating to building code administration and enforcement amending provisions to reflect residential infill construction management agreement. And with that, we have concluded with new business. Next, we have announcements, and as I see if any of my colleagues have announcements, I just would like to acknowledge and I apologize for not doing this at the beginning of the meeting, that Councilmember Reich is not in attendance because he is ill today, and we wish him well. And Council President Johnson is traveling, and we, of course, wish her a safe return. So, any announcements? Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I hope I say this right. On Wednesday evening, Gary Wilson passed away, and during our last meeting of 2014, we did a honorary resolution to honor Gary Wilson. But, you know, I just wanted to, I mean, let the council know that, I mean, Gary Wilson has just made a huge impact on North Minneapolis and probably Northeast as well. And it's a huge loss to the good folks in Ward 5, but also Ward 4. And so, I just wanted to recognize Mr. Wilson, Coach Wilson, for all the things that he's done. And, you know, if anybody has time and wants to make it to his wake, it's on Tuesday. I believe it's from 5 to 8 o'clock, and it's at Farview Park in the gymnasium that's named after him. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Yang. Any other announcements? Seeing none. Our next is to adjourn, and I would just note that upon adjournment of the council meeting, the Minneapolis Community Development Agency Board of Commissioners will meet. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Move to adjourn.
In a second? Do we need that? Maybe not. All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
Good morning. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Minneapolis Community Development Agency for today, January 30th. We have two items on our agenda. Item number one is accepting the minutes of the regular meeting, and item number two is adopting the attached resolution giving preliminary and final approval on a bond issuance for the Hiawatha Academies Project. What is the commission's pleasure, Commissioner Frye?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move both items one and two.
Both items have been moved. Items one or two. Further comments on either of those items? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Barbara Johnson is absent. Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Commissioner Reich is absent. Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Chair Goodman.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
Those items are approved. Seeing no further business before us, we are adjourned.